Hello, everybody. We're here for the public hearing on amendments to the Beach Activities Ordinance and also for consideration of a managed vendor agreement for concession services at two regional beach access locations. If it's all right with the commissioners, just real briefly, I'm going to go through the amendments to the Beach Activities Ordinance and very quickly explain those. I suggest that we consider the amendments to the Beach Activities Ordinance first, and then after that, we can consider the agreement for the management or services. So if you're following along with your draft ordinance, I'm just going to go through it by page and explain the amendments. The first is on page seven, and this was cleanup language with regard to dogs on the beach and permits for dogs on the beach. It removes the difference in the time for daylight savings time, so it made it uniform throughout the year, and also included a provision about permit revocation should anyone attempt to transfer their permits to like a guest or a renter. The next change is on page 11, paragraph Q.
Page eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-four, number five.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. On page eight, that's a, it's a deletion of language that was superfluous, and that's because we changed the fire permit last year to end at 1:00 a.m., and so this language was, it could be interpreted as contradictory, so we're just deleting that. I'm sorry, I missed that one. So page 11, paragraph Q of section 22-54, this, what it does is provides an exception for the requirements that tents be located on the upper third of the beach only for Grayton Beach, and that's due to the unique layout and circumstances of how people use Grayton Beach, which of course, everyone knows is the location where driving's allowed. So if we required people to have their tents on the back third of the beach, it would cause conflict with the drivers there, and that's at the request of TDC code enforcement. Page 12, this is an amendment to section 22-55. This is related to the signs. So last year, whenever we adopted the sign provision, the language said that the signs had to be wood or a material made to look like wood, and frankly, that just caused a lot of confusion, that language. So now it says wood or PVC, which I've confirmed with one of the side, sign companies is a standard material, and it's more sturdy than just like a plastic sandwich board sign. So hopefully, that will lend to some clarity for code enforcement. The next changes are on page 13. This has to do with section 22-57, which is the beach driving permits. To be very clear, we are making no substantive changes to the driving permits. I would not want anyone to be confused about that. But there was some, I guess, some of the language in there made it appear as though additional permits could be obtained, and that was confusing for the permitting clerks and for the TDC. So we're removing that language that's no longer needed. We're not taking away anyone's grandfather permit, and we're not adding to it. On page 16, there's a minor change to section 22-58. This would allow photographers, so currently, you cannot use drones of any kind on the beach. This, if you guys wanted to, we could add this language, though, that would allow photographers and the TDC and other authorized individuals, if they obtain authorization either through the county or the TDC, to use drones on the beach. The next changes are on page 18, and this has to do with beach vendors. Okay, so the first change has to do with storage boxes on the beach, and then there, we get into more detail on that on the next page, page 19. Paragraph three, if you read that, that allows us to enter into a managed vendor contract, which is what we're going to be considering later. It does not require us to do that, but that language in here allows us to do it, and it states that the terms of the contract would govern vending at those locations where we enter into a contract. Page 19, paragraph six, this deals with storage of vendor equipment at the beach. So currently, vendors are allowed to store their equipment outside of a box as long as it's at the toe of the dune. This change would require the vendor to either bring in their equipment every night or put it in a storage box. And paragraph D8, so this is the provision that allows upland property owners to have a veto power over vending seaward of their property, whether they own to the dune line or the mean high water line. Or, I'm sorry, what it, what it does is allows those who own to the dune lines to kind of control vending in front of those properties. Currently, as it's written, it applies across the board. The original intent was really just to apply to those properties that have an erosion control line established through the Beechery Nourishment Project, but unfortunately, the way it was written, it kind of expanded, expanded the provision. So in order to get back to the original intent of paragraph D8, we've added language that made it clear that no vending shall occur on beaches seaward of the erosion control line. And there's the current requirement that no vending occur on private property without that property owner's permission. There's no change to that. This is just a change to those properties where they do not own to the mean high water line and whether or not they have control over vending in front of their house. And those are all of the draft changes.
Go over that again.
With paragraph D8?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I probably didn't do a great job of going over that one.
Went a little fast.
Okay. So paragraph D8, as it currently reads, it allow, it says that no vending shall occur without the written annual authorization from any private property owner whose southern boundary line is contiguous to the proposed vending location. That's how it was written. It's my understanding and Brian's understanding that that language was originally included in the Beach Activities Ordinance to address the situation that we have on the western four miles of beach where there's an erosion control line through the Beechery Nourishment Project. Those owners who had previously owned to the mean high water line had an objection to vendors now being able to come into that, that what is now public property and then without their permission, which is a reasonable accommodation that we made to them, because under Florida law, whenever we do establish that erosion control line, we can't, even though the property's public and the public has a right to use it seaward of the erosion control line, we can't interfere with the upland property owner's use and enjoyment of it. And I think that there's a good argument that allowing vending without their permission would interfere with their view and their access to the water, which we're not allowed to do under Florida law. But unfortunately, the way D8 was originally written, it was written so broadly that it applied to circumstances where property owners only own to the dune line, they don't own to the mean high water line, and they were able to control vending in, in front of their house, even though they had no ownership interest in it whatsoever. And that led to circumstances where the county actually owns the beachfront property, but the upland property owner could dictate how it be used. Or in other circumstances, like in Seagrove, there is a public dedication for a public easement of the beach, and those property owners don't own to the dune, or to the mean high water line, they own to the dune line, but they were still controlling vending in those locations. Obviously, it's up to you guys how you want to treat that. I think the idea was that we want to try to get back to the original intent of D8, but it's certainly up to you guys on how you want to handle that. All right. And so what I would suggest is that we have commissioners' comments and public comments on these items, and then we can consider a motion on the Beach Activities Ordinance, and then we can move on to the vendor agreement.
Public, any comment from the public? Philip? Please state your name and spell your last name for the clerk.
And Philip, so we're gonna, we're talking about just the Beach.
Yep. Gotcha. It's Philip Poundstone, P-O-U-N-D-S-T-O-N-E. I've just got something to hand out, if that's okay. In specific regards, just the 2260, we'll, I'll be up here to discuss the vendor plan later. The most important thing that I wanted to bring up in this document that she's handing out, and I sent that in an email to you, it's pretty much the same thing, was just point number two about storage at the toe of the dune. My recommendation would be to you guys, I just don't think it's practical for us to be able to get beach boxes at every single public access, given that season starts tomorrow. This is not a kicking the can down the road, as we've heard in the past. As with our proposal with what we're doing with the managed vendor program, we will have boxes and attendants at every single location in 2020 with an attendant onsite that is able to manage this location and that box. So I just want to be as realistic as possible. If we can keep it the way it is for 2019, I can assure you with our plan that we're doing with the pilot program this year, when that is implemented next year, hopefully, if everything goes well this year, at all neighborhood, all regional beach accesses, which will completely take the monkey off y'all's back, I think it'll solve all the problems. This will also solve the storage at the toe of the dune, and I believe this is the most logistical, smart way to do this, is to fully implement that across the board. And granted, at our, at our pilot beach this year, we will have boxes and we will have an attendant managing that, so there will be no problems there. I just want to make sure that, given season starts tomorrow, we do it most realistically, and I'm not asking for you guys not to do anything, March 1st, tomorrow, in one year, there will be boxes everywhere and there will be no more chairs outside of boxes. So that would be my main consideration to you guys in regards to that. So thank you very much.
I have not been sworn in.
You don't have to.
Okay. Danny Hornsby, live at 202 Pompano.
Spell your last name, please.
H-O-R-N-S-B-Y.
Okay.
On the drone issue, I'd like to have a minimum height limit. We've already had a couple of run-ins of, I don't want a drone coming down and getting in somebody's face.
So currently, no drones are allowed, and this language would only allow authorized drone usage that's permitted through the TDC or the county. So we would have some control over who's using that drone and how, and if they're not using it appropriately, we could revoke their permit.
Can we put a, a height limit in there? I don't mind the drones out there.
That's something, that's something we could do with the permitting process.
Well, in their FAA regulation, 400 feet's maximum it can go up. I don't know if there's a minimum.
Yeah, that's what I'd like, get a minimum to, you know, you walking down the beach and you got a drone looking you in the face.
Under the language, there shouldn't be anybody down there unless they have a county permit.
Right.
Right now, right now, anyways.
Yeah, right now.
But still, even if, even if it does pass, there's no language in there to state how low they can go.
Brian, can you take care of that in the permitting?
We could, we can tie it to the FAA rules and regulations of drone use. So they have two categories, recreational and commercial. There's some other categories, but those are the main two that people that use them around here would fall under. We can tie permits back to those regulations. And there's, in that, there's rules against flying over people, around people, and stuff like that. I think that'd be the better way to do it than to say minimum height. Obviously, you know, trying to catch somebody at a minimum height and then defining, is that above sea level, above dune level, above current ground level becomes problematic. I think by the broad coverage of FAA rules, we'll be in a better position.
Okay. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hornsby. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Lori Reichenbach, R-E-I-C-H-E-N-B-A-C-H. And Sydney, if I am misspeaking on item number two, vendor boxes, the change being a box on the beach or removing the product at night. I, I hear what Mr. Poundstone has to offer. I would like to present in favor of those boxes. For years, we've talked about the variety of items that are left overnight on the beach and if we are going to be true to the preservation of our sea turtles. A box is at least an enclosed space where a turtle, where she'd come up and nest in that area, she may bump into that box and make her turn and go back to the sea. We might lose that clutch of eggs, or perhaps she just goes a little further down the beach and she continues to nest. But if that same turtle comes upon the beach and bumps into a variety of things that can be knocked over, slightly flipped open, allowing her to become entangled in some way, that is a danger, and that does not seem to hold true to the spirit of protecting our endangered species. So I would encourage you, I know that may be hard on some of our vendors, but, you know, with all businesses, there are rules, and you follow your rules, you pay your bills to, to vend or to have a store. I don't see why we can't have a higher expectation for our vendors in order to make sure we are following through with sea turtle preservation. I support vendor boxes. Thank you.
I'm hoping that perhaps there is a way that you can adopt the vendor boxes, but have a, an effective date that perhaps is May 1st, so it does protect the turtles. It doesn't require them to have the boxes on the beach like tomorrow, but it would allow them an appropriate amount of time to acquire boxes and situate them before the turtle season. Thank you.
You would suggest Mike Farsh, Lisa?
Hello, my name is Karen Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T. I am a Gulffront owner and also have someone who's in the vending business, and two things I want to talk about. One is the, the boxes on the beach. First of all, I, being a Gulffront owner, I see all the chairs that are left up in front of my house all the time, and I do think it's ironic that we have leave no trace and we tell everybody else, don't leave your stuff on the beach, but we let the vendors keep, you know, 10 different chairs all stacked up on the dunes. And I know it's an inconvenience, I'm, I'm in the business, I, I get it, but it's, it's a part of doing business. That's why we've purchased boxes at certain, you know, beach accesses. It costs me money to do that, but that's why I have to do that. I also think you need to look at maybe limiting the number of boxes, because now if all of a sudden, you're saying, everybody's got to have a box at every location, and there's many, many of us beach vendors, you're setting up a whole nother issue. I don't think you want 20 boxes at every beach access. So I think you really need to look at that. I like not having the, the chairs on the dunes. I don't think it looks good, and, and it does cause, you know, problems with turtles and other things. It also collects trash. The other thing is D8, and I, I hope that you will change the wording to what has been recommended. I think it's not right, not fair, that beachfront owners have the, the right to determine whether or not vending can occur on the beach in front of their property, even though they don't even own the property. It's affecting neighborhoods and people that are coming to the beach from, let's say, the north side of 30A to walk all the way across the street, and they can't rent chairs because a beachfront owner doesn't want them to be in front of their property. So I don't think that's fair and, and correct, and again, we're talking about the people that do not own down to the mean high water line. So I, I don't think it's been right that we've been doing it in the past. I think it's, you know, not fair to the rest of the public who are actually needing those services.
Good morning. Heather Parillo, P-A-R-I-L-L-O. I'm with Livwell 30A, and I'd love to address the issue with beach boxes at the toe of dunes. Everything I do will always be at a stand for all relevant parties, and I'd like to say I'm in support of beach boxes in a very strategic approach, and that's why I've been part of the South Walton Beach Service Association, to come up with a plan that makes sense, not only for the community, the homeowners, for the sea turtles, but for the vendors also and our guests. For those of us who have the resources, we can figure it out. We will figure out how to do whatever the county puts before us as far as regulations. It is a task at hand to be able to get boxes on the beach by tomorrow or have our people remove every piece of equipment from those beaches. We'll figure it out. What concerns me is all of the vendors who I'm a stand for, those small businesses that do not have the resources and the concern of crippling their operations. So in a very strategic manner, the way the Beach Management Program will handle the storage of equipment at the, at the toe of the dunes makes sense, and so I'm offering that it will be done. If, if it is decided that this needs to take place this season, I'm just asking for a reasonable timeframe that all of us can work together to make sure it happens, not just for those with the resources, but for every single beach vendor who wants to continue to do business in South Walton Beach. Thank you.
Just, just real quick, I wanted to just mention, May 1st, just in case you don't know why Lisa said that date, that is the beginning of turtle nesting season. So that would give vendors two months' time to either acquire or build boxes that can go on the beach. I just wanted to clarify that for Lisa.
Chairman, I'd like to add to this, too, that the thought process on this is that we would allow them at regional beach accesses by limited quantity, and that would be based on the, the changes to the code with the spacing, as well as in the area where we would put those. And so in the event that there was more vendors than available space for a box, we could do it in two ways. We could allow the vendors to work, once again, in a cooperational fashion to share a box, or we could do it by lottery. So we'd take application, if we have more than what is available there, we then do it by a simple selection process. If you got a box, you were able to store your stuff in the box. If you did not, you'd have to get it off the beach in the evening. At neighborhood beach accesses, we would do it the same way, except we would limit it to the vendor zones that are established or maybe new established vendor zones, depending on how the change to paragraph D8 goes. And then once again, there would be a time period, as Jay just mentioned, and it was mentioned by two other people, to allow for that change. Anything that affects vendor operations, we recognize that you can't immediately make that change in one day, and we allow for a time period.
And there's no problem if you guys wanted to make just that section effective May 1st? There's no issue with that.
Good morning. Barbara Morano, M-O-R-A-N-O. I just want to say I'm just speaking for myself, not representing an organization. I support what Karen, the Gulffront owner, said, also what Lori said, but I think we have to remember that a vendor can take the chairs physically off the beach. We're forgetting that. We keep on wanting to build boxes for everybody to make it convenient. They have a right to vend, but they also have the right to remove the chairs. So just don't worry about too many boxes, get the chairs off the beach, and also think about May 1st. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning. Dave Meadows, M-E-A-D-O-W-S. I represent, uh, La Doche Vita, and I'm in support. I'm in support.
Slow down just a little. Speaking a little fast from my brain.
No problem at all. I represent, or La Doche Vita, and I'm in support of storage boxes at the areas that you were requesting, but also in support of the vendor. We've talked about this before, it's come up in many public workshops about removing the equipment on a daily basis or bringing it down whenever a customer shows up to the beach and so forth. We've talked about the logistics of it. We've talked about the congestion that it will create at the public access points that we have now. The regionals, during the middle of the day, there's no parking. So when a vendor has to show up to drop off the equipment, it creates an issue. Also, the congestion on the boardwalks that we currently have coming back and forth, it doesn't create a safe environment. But with the management vendor program that we're hopefully going to adopt, that will prevent all this by having storage boxes for those vendors to participate on the public-owned beaches. The neighborhood access points are even worse, because there is no parking or very limited parking, so to access it back and forth in the morning and in the evening to removing it, it just creates, in my opinion, just a logistic nightmare and some problems and some safety issues back and forth with customers and the vendors. So we are in support, as a vendor, in support of storing it, getting, you know, the individual items, creating less of a footprint or fewer footprints along the beach. We're in support of that, but let's do it smart and let's do it, we, we've had this problem, we've kicked it down, kicked the can down the road plenty of times, but I think we're in the right direction right now, especially with this program. It's going to eliminate majority of all the problems that we're hearing about, ghost chairs, storage of equipment on the beaches and so forth. But if TDC or code enforcement decides to adopt another program, a lottery, now you've gotten two competing different entities going on. Let's stay on the course with a vendor management program, and it will resolve most of our issues. Thank you very much.
One thing that we've had a lot of discussion on is ghost sets.
Yes, sir.
Did we address that in these changes?
We did. In the specific scope of work in the Agreement for Concession Services, it has a detailed description of how that would be eliminated, and the, the main thing is, is that the attendant supplied by South Walton Beach Service Association will not set the equipment out until the client arrives to the beach.
Okay. But what about those other vendor areas that's not covered by this agreement?
No, sir, we, you know, we, we don't have any specific language that says you, that a, in, in areas that aren't under a managed vendor program, that the equipment can't be put out until the client gets there. And the typical vendor operations on delivery services is set the equipment out in the morning and pick it up in the afternoon.
Anyone else? Anything from the board? That's exactly why I was looking to do the whole thing real crazy. We'll, we'll get it next year. If you would move your mic closer to you, I can't hear. Mr. Chairman?
Well, first of all, I'm in favor of the May 1st on the boxes. That will take care of the turtles and it'll take care of the debris left on the beach. The, I think if we pass the contract with the managed vendor thing, I think, I think for this year, you know, whatever we're gonna have, we're gonna have on the managed vendor thing, but next year's gonna be a whole new ballgame, because next year, we're gonna try to have managed vending throughout the beach. So this is pretty much the last year we're gonna be doing, doing this. So, and that's another subject. So, and that's another subject coming up, but my only change would be to change that to May 1st.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the beach activities ordinance as amended with the amendment to it that all boxes be in place by May 1st of this year.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion from the board? Any from the audience? Bob?
Bob Brooke, B.R.O.O.K.E. I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. Does this motion require that every vendor who operates on a regional beach have a box there?
No, no, it doesn't. I think, I think that's something that Brian is, is going to work out. Am I correct, Brian?
Correct.
Does this require that they either put it in the box or remove it?
And what, my understanding, Bob, is what we're encouraging the vendors to do is share a box.
Well, I, I understand that ultimately, when you have the managed vendor activity or managed vendor process in place, there'll only be the boxes that are needed by the agent for the managed vendor, which is great.
Yeah.
But for this interim year, it, it concerns me that this requires that every vendor who operates on the beach, since the managed vendor program is only gonna be on the pilot program beaches, that every one of them will have to have a box on the beach. Or do I, do I understand that you just say that they have to remove them physically from the beach, the toe of the dune, everything completely off the beach, or can they still move them up the way they do today?
Do they have to place them in the box or remove it?
Remove it from the beach completely.
All of them, every beach.
That's, that's the draft. Mine's the two pilots.
I guess I'm, I'm concerned about why you would want to do this for just one year. It, it puts a pretty much, pretty, pretty excessive burden on the.
Bob, if I may, address the thing here, this first year is a pilot program for the two that's coming up.
Understand that.
Okay? And this, if it works well, it's probably gonna be implemented across the board next year.
Understand that.
So I know it, we're not changing. I don't think we'd be changing. Those vendors, it's not addressing the two that we're planning on putting under a management program. Those wouldn't change from year to year because the regulation, unless we go back in there and delve into taking that part of it out or modifying it or whatever, the only thing we'll be looking at from hereforth is whether we go two beaches or eight.
Then I, then maybe I misunderstand what, what's covered here.
Let me offer some clarity.
I'm, I'm just concerned whether the.
Let Brian out.
Let me offer some clarity. So, so Bob, so it's two different issues. Managed vendor program completely resolves that issue because there's only one vendor on that beach. He will have some storage, or that, that entity, South Walton Beach Service Association, will have storage boxes.
And that might, it's the number of boxes that you need.
Right. And that would be regulated by the current code placement and such and the agreement we have. On the other beach accesses, regional beach accesses, where we do not have a managed vendor program this year, there would be required, the, the vendors that vend there, deliver product there, will be required to store their product in a box or remove it from the beach every day. The storage boxes would be allowed on what I call a limited basis. In other words, we would define an area where they could be. They would have to be put up within the code that defines the frequency of them. In the event, because not every vendor vends on every regional beach access.
Understand.
And so in the event that there is not enough boxes for the vendors that want to vend there, they have two choices. One is, is, is we would then do it by lottery as who, as to who gets the opportunity to place a box in this area. So let's just use Santa Clara as an example. We'll allow three boxes there. We have three vendors that vend that area. Each one of them gets to put a box down there. If we have four, we take application and we draw names and the three that get drawn get to put a box there. And then there's still the opportunity for the vendors to work together because in Santa Clara, you know, a vendor may only have 10 chairs and a box will hold 40. And so he could say, vendor four could say, hey, vendor three, is there any opportunity for me and you to share that box? You know what I'm saying? And if, if there is, then great. We've achieved some more cooperational togetherness between vendors. If not, then vendor four has to remove his product from the beach every day.
Is, is that the way it is today or it was last year?
No, today it's they can store their product at the toe of the dune regardless, or I'm sorry, provided it is to be rented the next day. And since they meet that satisfactor, that requirement by annual or weekly contracts, that's where we have a problem with a lot of product at the, at the toe of the dune. At, at loose product. When I say loose, it's, it's gotta be stacked in what's, here's a description of it of perpendicular to the water, stacked together. And I believe there was some discussion about making them lock it up, but there's not a requirement for that now. But what happens is, is that product gets moved during the evening with our nighttime beach fister. And also turtles don't bump and go around stacks of chairs as easily as they do around a box. Boxes are painted white, they have a number on them, they're very nondescript and they, you know, they blend into the dune system very, you know, fairly well. So.
Well, I, I would just urge the board not to make a change for one year and let the pilot program run its course. Let the other vendors operate the way they have. And then if you're gonna implement the managed vendor program next year, it should solve these problems and minimize the number of boxes on the beach. Thank you.
This is a change to.
I, I would like to add.
Separate from the management.
Yeah. What, what Bob's saying is keep it like, like it is this year rather than change it.
Yeah.
But the, but the problem is, a lot of the complaints, correct me, from last year was about this stuff on the toe of the dunes. The code solves that and I think the public would prefer us to solve it and then move forward next year and improve it.
Yeah. Like I say, it's, it's, right now, it's, it's two separate issues. And because of the language in the managed vendor program that said it takes precedent over other code sections when that managed vendor program is, you know, put onto that beach, then that, that takes away any, any previous boxes on that beach. And so, you know, the intent of this change in the code was to not have loose vendor chairs on the beach for a couple of reasons. One is, like I say, the marine turtles have higher propensity to get fouled up in them. Second is, is if we're demanding our commercial vendors to store their product on the dune, it's a lot easier to convince the general public that they can't store their product on the toe of the dune. We solved that problem last year at our regional, our, our public beach accesses by inserting in the code that nobody can store, or general public can't store their equipment at the toe of the dune or the upland sections of that beach. And so our crews removed that now, just like we used to do Leave No Trace all the way down the beach. But that was the intent of this change to this section of code.
I've put everything I have into this, guys. I plead with you, please. I'm trying to make this the absolute perfect program that will change the entire game for the rest of history with vending in Walton County. We have a perfect plan with everything. If we do this May 1st, this blows the plan up for 2019. And I'm not saying it's the end of the world. Don't, don't hear me wrong. You are going to get a ton of complaints because what is, what is my job? My job is to try to handle a bunch of vendors who don't want to do what you're asking them to do, right? The way we're doing that is creating a perfect managed beach program with a gentleman or a nice lady who sits on the beach every day. Make sure everyone follows the rules. They make sure everything is perfect in the box. If we're tasking the TDC on May 1st to have 50, 60, 100 boxes on all, you know, the 26 miles of the beach, I promise you, it is going to be messy. You're gonna get hundreds and hundreds of complaints or people saying, this vendor's not putting in this box. And then we're gonna have the issue of now, the system that I've created to not discriminate against vendors, that anybody and everybody, small, one man show, or you have 100 employees, you're not discriminated against, but now we have a lottery of who gets to use the box? So now we're asking this one man or woman who's running a very small business to carry their stuff up and down the boardwalk every single day with a sharp umbrella that they could fall and hurt themselves badly or a tourist and their car sitting in the parking lot for 30 minutes? I'm not asking you guys not to do anything. I promise. Please do this January 1st, 2020. We will have a human being at every single beach that watches this box all day long. They will make sure it's handled appropriately. We'll have time to do it right. This is the most important thing I'm asking you guys for safety and so we don't discriminate against a small vendor. I just please ask you to do this January 1st and I appreciate your consideration.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
The, the problem, the problem with that is, is these beaches that we're talking about belong to the public and the people that are doing business on them are doing business on them and making money off public beaches. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them to put their stuff in a box. And however the TDC wants to manage those boxes, that's still public beach. And if, what we do get hundreds of complaints about is stuff scattered all over the toe of the dune not neatly and things blowing off into the water and also, this is an answer to those complaints from last year and, and frankly, if they don't want to do it, don't do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gladwell. I, I would just like to remind everyone in general that vending is a privilege and is not a right. Secondly, Mr. Poundstone will only be concerned about the two beaches or whatever the commission decides that he will be responsible for this year. The, the rest of the beaches are not his issue this year. This is not a new topic. Every vendor that's here and every vendor that is not here, I can remember us talking about this since 2015, all of 2016, all of 2017, 18, and here we are in 19. Waiting one more year only allows us to complain about it for one more year. This is not a surprise. It was coming. It has taken a while to get to this point. People have had a chance to think about it and plan for it. Please move forward with boxes on all of the regional and neighborhood beach accesses. Brian seems to have a great plan in mind that should work for everybody fairly. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Reichenbuckin is exactly right. I've been listening to it for, probably from 2014 up to now. And it should not be a surprise to the vendors that there was gonna be some measures taken to try and nip this in the bud. And kicking it down, the can down the road for another year because of this, don't hold water with me. I'm sorry, just don't. So I'm gonna call the question.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
So now commissioners, it is a consideration of the agreement for concession services at Inlet Beach and Ed Wollene, regional beach accesses.
Before we get started on this, Brian, can you come up?
What's your, what's your opinion of having two as opposed to one?
In the initial formation of this, this plan, it was talked about having one beach access. And the reason was is, you know, we want to make sure that we have a successful program. It is a big change to the vending industry. It'll be a big change to our beaches in a better way and we certainly want to have success. I feel that coming through the committee that was put together and all the discussions we've had in this room, that we have a good program that should achieve success. So like I say, my original thought was one, however, whatever you would like for us to do is what we'll make work.
What's your opinion is what I'm asking.
Right.
Not, not, not that you're gonna make it work. What's your opinion as opposed to one or two? And don't sidestep the issue.
Yes, sir. So the, the committee's recommendation was to do one and that would be Inlet Beach. If we had to do two, we would add Ed Wollene.
Okay.
Why?
Pardon me?
What was the reasoning for that?
The, the same reason I just explained, to make sure that we have success in the program and that we don't have a failure that would make the program not continue on.
Are you saying you're not flexible enough that if something comes up, you can jiggle your head to get it done?
No, sir. I've, I've become very adept at that.
Yeah, I figured you had.
In fact, I've, I've learned quite well that things are gonna get thrown at me that I gotta quickly answer. So the, the answer to the question is, is like I explained to the chairman, that was our initial reasoning. It, it shouldn't remain that. There, there's, there's two reasons why Inlet Beach and Ed Wollene were picked. I picked Ed Wollene originally because it's close to my office and I want to be able to be close to this program so I personally can monitor it to make sure that it works. Second, Ed Wollene is a good mix of vending and the general public. So a lot of the problems we're trying to create or, or fix are because the general public is feeling squeezed out at the public beaches by the vendor.
All right. Which of the two locations?
Ed Wollene.
Is it, yeah, Ed Wollene and Inlet, which of the two is the busiest or more, uses more?
They both, if, if you did it by quantity of vendors, it would be Inlet Beach because it's bigger. It has about 79-foot of beach. There is a, a large entity that has a lot of rentals at that particular beach. Ed Wollene is limited in its frontage. Like I say, Inlet probably has more vendors, has a higher ratio of vendors per general public, whereas Ed Wollene has a good mix of both. And so the, both of those have a reason that you'd want to do this pilot program at, at both of them. To, to make sure that your pilot program is testing all the conditions that, that we're trying to fix.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. You, you've got one inlet beach that's got a different dynamics than Ed Wollene, but if you're doing all your studying and your pilot at one particular location, you're not gonna have a, a fair representation of what might take place at, at Ed Wollene. So my thinking is, we try it at both. That way you can get an idea of how, due to the different dynamics there, which one and what adjustments that may be, may need to be made the following year.
Yeah. Like I say, there, there's reasons for doing one or doing both. Once again, I feel my job is to give you all, all the information to make the appropriate decisions.
I believe the Okaloosa's implementing this on all their beaches this year, aren't they?
They're making some big changes to how they handle vending on the beaches in Okaloosa County.
And Bay already has.
Pardon me?
Bay already has a managed vendor program.
They, they have various forms of it, concession agreements. You know, both those beaches are a little different than our beach. We have a lot of beach accesses, you know, eight main, main regional beach accesses that, you know, offer parking and, and restrooms and places for the general public to come and vending to happen. A lot of neighborhood beach accesses that come down in between private property of various relationships. Both those counties have renursed beaches, a little bit different, you know, dynamic. Okaloosa doesn't have near as many public beach accesses as we do. They have more in the form of large parks and then a few smaller ones. Bay County does have a lot of public beach accesses that all dump out onto Renursed Beach.
I just pointed, two, two would be a reasonable program for our unique circumstances, but there's places all over the country that do managed programs. So I mean, it's, it's not like they're gonna fail. Shouldn't fail.
I don't, I don't like the fails.
There you go.
Brian, do you feel adequately staffed to do both?
No, we'll need to add some beach ambassadors. That was, you know, part of this discussion.
Just the ambassadors.
Is, we'll need to add some beach ambassadors program. Jay has confirmed that we can, we have money available. Resource it. You know, beach ambassadors have a fairly decent pay range and I actually have an ad out that they closed yesterday where we hire on our seasonal beach ambassadors. And so we could, I haven't looked to see what response we got, but we usually get a good response to those.
And then I just have one more question. And I just call it the three strikes, you're out kind of rule. Do we still have the, I guess reprimand would be the word if we're doing, if vendors are not doing things within the realm, do we, I didn't see that ceiling because I saw...
So under the contract...
Public entity crime.
Under the contract, basically, we have the right to cancel the contract at any time for any reason. So if the entity that we're contracting with is not properly managing that beach, we can cancel the contract. That would require...
Is that what you're referring to? You're referring to the permit revocation process?
I think that will work because we're really dealing with contractors. We're not, we're not dealing with employees, so you can't exactly, if the contractor's not doing it to the, to the standard, then we have a...
For the managed...
A way to revoke, yes.
Right. For the managed vendor program, we have a contract that has termination clause.
But for the other beaches, if they don't obey the rules, they get tickets and how many tickets can they get before?
There's a ambiguous term in the 2260I, I believe, that has a single statement that says, failure to follow the rules of this section could be caused for permit revocation. Last year, we started a permit revocation process through a committee and we established, you know, all the parts of it. Really, it was a committee put together to generate or develop this process. And what happened is we created a, I created a narrative, a report, that explained the different parts of it and the selections that could be made to include in a permanent revocation process, but no action's been taken on that yet.
You need to take action on it.
Just a second, we're getting a little off target here. We're talking strictly about this contract now. This, if we're gonna do something like that, we'll have to do it at another meeting and advertise for it and, because we finished with the beach ordinance part of it.
Yes, sir.
So let's stay on the contract.
Ten-four.
Any more questions?
Well, I was going to say something, but I'll wait till we get through this.
Okay. Me personally, I think we need to, to start with one beach. If I had my druthers, I would start with Inlet Beach because it is so big. And I think, I think we're gonna get spread out, there's gonna be a lot of issues. But I, I just think we ought to do one, but, but you know, the board may disagree with me, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the agreement for concession services to include Inlet Beach and Ed Wollene.
Second.
Any more comments?
We all on board with that.
Any more comments?
I'm sorry.
Any comment from the audience?
I wasn't sworn, but I swear to tell the truth. Dotting this speech phrase, I just wondered if we could go back for a moment on, to the last vote, I wasn't sure if May 1st was in there for the boxes or not.
It was.
It was. Okay. Thank you.
Any, any more comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay.
Mr. Chairman, I know this ends this, but I want to at least make this announcement since we do have vendors in the, in the audience. One thing that I have noticed over my tenure here, when it deals with beach violations and violators, and the majority of them do a good job. I want that known. They do a good job. However, there are individuals out there that will take advantage of the processes that are in place when they get tagged for a violation. And they know the play, the system, in that if you appeal it or challenge it, then that could, they continue to operate in that fashion until a lot of times the season's up. And then they get paid, pop with a little bitty fine and they move on to the next year. And I was gonna proffer, but because we hadn't put this as, as an advert, in the advertisement, I'm gonna ask legal if we might want, and the chairman, to set an additional public hearing strictly dealing with this language here. And basically what it says, all vendors, this is under 2260I, all vendors should sign an acknowledgement that he or she has read the section and understands its terms. In addition to those penalties in section 2262, the vendor permit shall be revoked for a period of one year for the adjudication of two violations. Now that gives them a warning, it gives them cited, they're probably gonna get hit with a fine, but they come around and they do it again, then it puts it up for revocation for the following season. Now that, we can't take a vote on because...
So what we could do with that direction, I can bring that language back to you guys at the next board meeting and then we can set a public hearing. And you guys want to reconsider that language, we can have it in place as early as we get to our meeting table.
I appreciate that.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right off the bat, I think, I think two violations is small when you're dealing with kids, putting chairs up. It's, you know, you get more than two traffic tickets before you lose your license and you can kill somebody with a car. But we can bring it up and discuss it at the next meeting with, when we can set a hearing. We're done, we're done with all this. You can, you can speak to this issue at the next, when we have a public hearing on it. Anything else from the board?
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.